You're watching Cable Two.
2025 Special Called Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools Board of Education Meeting. I am Deanna Kaplan, Board Chair, and I appreciate your attendance, and I say good evening to our viewers on Cable Two. Please rise as we start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance and remain standing as you are able for the invocation given by Board Member Susan Miller. Our inspirational quote for tonight is by Coffey Anan, the former United Nations Secretary General. Knowledge is power. Information is liberating. Education is the premise of progress in every school, every society, and in every family. We will now have a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you, Board Member Miller. Our first order of business tonight is the agenda review. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda to move two consent items to action items? These two items are Consent Item D, Consider Approval of the Contract with Crosby Scholars, and Consent Item E, Consider Approval of the Memorandum of Agreement between Forsyth Community College and Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. Do I have a motion?
Yep.
So I have a motion by Vice Chair Bohannon, and I have a second by Board Member Coon. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, that passes unanimously. We are moving on to our public comments. Remember to speak on agenda items only, and I would also ask that when you all do come to the podium, please state the agenda item that you are speaking of. The protocols that we have in place for public comments are to ensure orderly and efficient board meetings. Pursuant to the District Civility Policy 1170, the Board does not tolerate disorderly conduct or disorderly or disrespectful behavior. Please direct your comments only to me as a board chair and not to anyone in the audience, and we cannot talk about sensitive or personnel matters in this public setting. Please know that each public comment is heard, there's a follow-up process to address your questions or concerns. You have three minutes to speak, and if you have more to share, always know you can email us directly. Our first speaker is Patty Gillenwater.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for your time and consideration, and really appreciate all the amazing hard work y'all are doing, because I know this is a challenging time for everyone, so thank you. So my subject is the Hill contract. I think it's great to see that y'all were able to get that kind of expertise brought in to help us through this time. I've reviewed minutes of the Finance Committee, the draft audit report, and reports that you've shared with our community, and that's led to my suggestions. My background is, I am a former auditor, I was a CPA auditor with Deloitte more than a few years ago, but sometimes you don't forget everything you learned. So I have some ideas that I'd like to present, and I do have this written down, so I'll give it to you with copies to everyone, to add to the contract, to ask, to use their expertise in a few additional areas that may or may not be intended in the contract as we have seen. So one is to have them review and recommend processes for the Board and for the Finance Committee to make sure that, and I think y'all are already starting to address that, but you know, for example, the 2024 audit was to be completed last October, and going through the Finance Committee minutes, there's no mention of that in the following months. So that, you know, just things like that. It would be helpful, I think, if you formed an advisory committee comprised of CFOs from the community who would hopefully volunteer their time, so that you can have financial experts advising you, and you know, you all obviously have the expertise in education, you can't be experts in everything. So otherwise, you're just overly dependent on the CFO, which we know how that went this past time. Would like to also suggest that, that when you hire the next CFO, that you engage Hill to help with the assessment of your final candidates, and make sure you do a very, very thorough background check and reference check, and I would really have them, because of their financial expertise, I think they'd be very qualified to make those assessments of whoever you're considering. I think it would also make sense to have them, if they're not already doing it, to not only be looking at the processes in place and making recommendations for your processes, but also people. And then finally, I really think that you should, if you're not already doing this, I don't know what your process is for the audit firm, but I think going ahead and getting an RFP out there to consider other firms, it appears from what's public, and I know there's plenty of things I can't know, but it does not appear to me that your auditor came to you last fall and expressed concerns, and in my opinion, as a former auditor, I think that they should have done that, so I think it's time to look for another firm. Thank you again for considering all that, and maybe I could just leave these right here?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Derek Setser.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I'm speaking on Article 46, Transfer Number 16, and your request with the County Commission. Good evening, my name is Derek Setser, an educator and proud member of FCIE. Tonight, the Board is being asked to approve actions that will cut teacher pay, redirect building maintenance funds, and restructure budgets to hide past mismanagement, all without meaningful transparency or shared sacrifice. Let's start with Article 46. You're proposing to cut teacher pay under the disguise of fiscal prudence, not because the funds aren't there, but because the district wants to build a nearly $1.2 million surplus. At the same time, you're sending nearly $1.4 million to charter schools. You're protecting $1.24 million in legacy supplements to senior staff. You're asking teachers to absorb the impact of a $1.2 million repayment to the county caused by last year's accounting failures. This is not shared sacrifice, this is targeted assertive. Meanwhile, Transfer Number 16 quietly moves hundreds of thousands of dollars away from regular instruction into contracted services without any elevation or explanation. Then you request $8.5 million from county commissioners by raiding unspent capital funds meant for roofs, HVACs, and safety, safety repairs. You're covering operational gaps with money earmarked already for student and staff's safety to create a contingency pot that has no public criteria and no guaranteed for equitable use. This isn't fiscal responsibility, this is structural neglect wrapped up in bureaucracy, and teachers are being punished for it. As a matter of fact, this may constitute negligence under the North Carolina law under GS 115C-12, 115C-42, and 115C-436. This Board has a legal and fiduciary duty to exercise proper oversight of public funds. By failing to require monthly fiscal reports even after signs of overspending, you have opened the door to legal liability. Additionally, educators and families are going to suffer from these reckless decisions. We could and should respectfully and rightfully seek recourse under GS 115C-42, which opens the Board to civil liability. FCIE has formally requested that these funds be relocated through a protective funding code, ensuring that they remain in our schools and cannot be diverted, diluted, or delayed.
Sir, I will allow 15 seconds.
We want to move forward, but you clearly don't understand what transparency is. Moving forward means transparent decisions, equitable sacrifice, and a commitment to keeping educators and students at the center. We urge you to reject Article 46, delay reallocation of capital funds until-
Sir, your time is up.
-full project impacts are publicly disclosed, and we demand-
Sir, your time is up.
...of contracts of central office spending.
Frankie Santoro.
Good evening, I'm Frankie Santoro, I'm starting my 17th year as a teacher here in this district, and I sent you all an email earlier today, and I'm here to publicly share my comments about Article 46. I was truly struggling with the idea and recommendation to decrease teacher pay salary or supplement due to Article 46, but I also understand that there's been a revision to the agenda, and teacher supplements will not be impacted, thanks to the county commissioners for bailing that, bailing us out. But in regards to ever considering, ever considering cutting teachers' pay in the future, I feel that there are some remarks that should be made publicly. Between 2021 and 2022, there were several executive cabinet members who were approved to receive pay raises well above $10,000 in one year. One got $25,000 pay increase, one of them got $25,000 pay increase. Some of our classified people don't even get paid that much. These types of pay increases will never be seen for a teacher's salary. And meanwhile, those at central office who ideally are, you know, ultimately have little to no direct impact, direct impact on students, and their success are sitting with their six-figure pay, not having to worry about their pay being decreased. But teachers, teacher morale is already low due to the $42 million deficit. That's a given, I'm glad to hear that there will not be a decrease in our pay, thanks to the commissioners. If there were ever to be any, any decrease, if there were ever to be any decrease in teacher pay, I can guarantee you that we would never see that money again. It'd be taken away, and we would not see it again, and we definitely wouldn't see a $15,000 pay increase. I would like to publicly thank the Commission for coming through and supporting teachers and ensuring that there is no shortfall for the coming school year. I ask that there would never be a recommendation, ever, be a recommendation in the future for school-based staff to ever have their pay decreased. Thank you so much, Board, for your time.
Thank you. Lee Childress.
Good evening, my name is Lee Childress, I'm speaking on Article 46 as well. I just also found that out, but I had given the speech, talked to a lot of people, had a lot of conversations, so I'm gonna go ahead and give my speech, okay? I do come before you to ask you not to reduce the Article 46 portion of the supplement from $300 to $275 a month. The past few months have been very painful for many in this district. Back in April, several educators held meaningful conversations with our county commissioners, and it looked like at that time there was support for a supplement increase. Then late in the school year, obviously, the huge financial bomb dropped. Unfortunately, support for this increase had to take a backseat, because the commissioners, like many of us, didn't know the amount, the deficit, we were actually in. So imagine my surprise when I heard that a specially called School Board Meeting had been called, and one of the items up for debate was actually reducing the supplement. I am aware that Article 46 portion of our supplement is sales tax revenue, and for the past couple of years, that has been stagnant. Still, it is demoralizing to realize that our certified staff could see a pay cut, especially with all the uncertainty of when or even if the budget will be passed in Raleigh. $250 doesn't seem like a lot of money, but I personally know teachers who are single parents, and literally scrape pennies to make sure when the end of the month comes that they'll have enough. When you're trying to decide whether to feed your kids or pay the power bill, it is a lot of money. I close by saying, I know this year was going to be tight financially, but never in my wildest dream did I think a pay cut was in the cards. Obviously, we've gotten some things, but I did urge you to keep our pay the same. There would have been a lot of frustrated teachers and others paid on the certified scale, and our staff and our students deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Daniel.
Good evening, I'm Alan Daniel, I'm also speaking on the Article 46 and the Hill contract. I sent you all an email earlier today, I'll hit the high spots of what I said. The cut of $25 a month is based on a decrease, projected decrease in this year's Article 46. But in communication with Dr. Martin, he told me that while the state is estimating a 3% to 4% increase in sales tax revenue, they kept it flat, and he said the district should be able to count on receiving what they received last year, if not a little bit more. The Article 46 is distributed to 4,040 employees. If you break that out, it comes up $38.62 a year short. Last year, the majority of this Board, after being erroneously informed that there was a surplus in Article 46, wanted to give the teachers every penny that was due them. Why now was there a proposal when the only shortfall was $36 a year, $3.86 a month, to cut $25 a month? And, I'll cover the rest of that at the end, as I was answering questions today about why we send Article 46 money to charter schools, I looked at the math, and it says that 7% of the students, estimated, go to charter schools, so 7% of 19.7 million is 90,000, or no, excuse me, is $1.38 million. However, if 3,500 students go to charter school and 50,000 students go to public district schools, the Article 46 should not be divided by 50,000, it should be divided by 53,500, in which case the amount to be sent to charter schools would be 1,291,000. I just saved y'all $90,000. My question is, does Hill check y'all's math? Thank you.
Katie Sonnenlee.
Hi, my name is Katie Sonnenlee, I'm speaking on the Hill Consultants Contract. I just wanted to speak in favor of extending that contract and keeping them not just through when we hire the new CFO, but even after, for the first several months or however long until the CFO is really in place and understands all the systems. And like the earlier speaker said, to make sure that we come out of having the Hill Consultants with us, having really clear policies, procedures on a lot of things, from the school level to the Board level, I think that would be helpful in a lot of ways, and I know there's new finance computer system coming in as well, but I think this is money worth spending, $145,000 versus 40-whatever million. It could have potentially prevented us from being in this huge hole, so continue to spend that as we need, and not, we can cut where we have to cut, but I think that's not a place to cut. That's all, it was short, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our discussion items, we have six tonight. First, Dr. Paula Wilkins, our Chief Academic Officer, will give us an AI Guidelines update.
Good evening, Board Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Bohannon, members of the Board, and Superintendent Moore. We have shared a little bit about in development, some AI guidelines, and this AI update will provide some overview and information about those. So as we think about AI and its impact on the world, we see it happening every day in all of our lives, AI is impacting everything that we do. And as we think about supporting our students to be future-ready, prepared today for a change in tomorrow, we know that's an ever, ongoing reality for us too. And so one of the great reports that was released in 2025, the Future Job Reports, just really talks about how employers are looking at the individuals that know how to leverage AI effectively to help transform industries and outcomes, is what all of our employers are looking for. And so having that skill to be able to use AI responsibly is a skill that we definitely want to embody in our school system and help support both our educators and our students. And if you get a chance to read the report, it's very fascinating. So in April of this year, an executive order was released that focused on how do we build AI literacy in our schools, and this focus was on how do we support and train educators comprehensively to use AI as a tool to help support instruction with our students and to expose them with access of using AI responsibly to help prepare our workforce to be future innovators. This is something that we know all over the world is an ongoing need, and I know we often think about, well, it's promoting cheating, it's unethical, we hear those time and time again, but this is a federal expectation as we think about how do we prepare our young people for the future. And this has extended also to our state, and some of our state board policies have helped to think about two different sections, supporting both basic AI literacy for our students and our staff, to help to be able to recognize how to use AI responsibly and its limitations for use, as well as training infrastructure to support both educators and our students as well, and empowering teachers to use it and integrate it into instruction. Also, the second section thinks about how do we personalize professional learning to help support our educators, to think about how they leverage the tools of AI in a job-specific approach, to be able to do things more efficiently, and to think about how do we ethically use it and responsibly model it to help support our students. So let's talk about what we're doing on the local level, and so this has been a process over two years. In spring of 2024, we had a team of district leaders from our media services and then technology, instructional technology, when it was based in technology at the time, that worked internally to create some base guidelines. We had some turnover on that team, and so we know we had to take what that team started and to integrate it even further. So we looked to see how do we expand that team and include student voice, as well as our teams across the district at a school level, and working with DPI to help to revise some of those initial guidelines. And so that team convened all this spring to help strengthen those guidelines, working side-by-side with DPI. And so that was what we might call our next phase, so we had a pre-phase, moving into Phase One, was how do we revise what that first team started? In Phase Two, we looked at how many layers can we get feedback to help to strengthen those guidelines so that they can be appropriately leveraged to help support both our students and our staff. And so you will see the groups that we did rounds of feedback to help to give us information around how do we strengthen these guidelines to make them work for both our district and to be responsive as time and needs change. And so as we move into Phase Three, we're working to finalize those revisions, to work on our communication and our professional learning plan, and then looking at our supporting documentation to leverage as well as ongoing training and support for staff and students. And so what does that look like? So these guidelines are indeed guidelines and not a policy, and I know we've talked a little bit about this, and so why are we seeing guidelines versus a policy? It is because of the ongoing changes that we see with AI. AI is rapidly recreating innovative, and by the time we post something, put it in a policy, it's obsolete, and then we're working on the next layer of revisions. So those guidelines help us to look at a base level, what are we looking to do around the use of AI? So some key considerations for us as a team is which policy do we attach it to? There are acceptable use policies that we already have in place that these guidelines can be connected to, or potentially as far as an administrative regulation. And we also are thinking about how do we ensure that ethical use for students and staff? I will note, staff do have more access to AI tools internally as a district, our students do not have access to those platforms for several reasons. One, monitoring, two, being able to make sure that our adults have some of that training support first have been our issues that we're working towards, even though we've had some base support trainings across the district. So to help us develop this, we have looked at guiding documents from other districts, and you'll see access and links to those, as well as those recommendations from the state as well. So what does professional development look like? We have been fortunate and excited, and we'll get to recognize those three members from our team that participated in the North Carolina DPI AI Collaborative, and so they are definitely the forerunners that are helping us lead the way as we think about developing training and to create more capacity internally. We've facilitated PD, and you see the, the groups that we have worked with over this year, and we'll continue that moving into this upcoming school year. So for this school year, we're focusing on a six-part virtual series that will look at basic AI literacy. What is generative AI? How do we use it ethically? How do we align this to the work of our portrait? Because we know that is what we are vying for as a system, and what are some of those best practices that align to that? We're also gonna look at supporting those who've had some of those base trainings with us, how do they participate in the NCDPI, micro credentialing courses around generative AI, and then we're working to build a district collaborative similar to some of the work we've done already with personalized instruction and personalized learning. We'll ultimately look at how do we provide some ongoing job embedded PD for several groups on our teams. So that's our general updates, and the guidelines are embedded in this overview. Are there any additional questions?
Board Member Watts.
Not a question, just a, and I want you to continue to embrace the college level, because the college, I think, has a, they're farther ahead on the curve of AI, and also making sure that we are in, we are in symmetry with them, because many of our students are going to the next level, so make sure that also replication we're doing at the district level, but I know in the documents is there, so thank you for including the college level in those other documents as resources.
Absolutely. So our high school students will be, as we think about the student phase of our rollout with access to tools, they are our first groups that will begin to open platforms and access as we begin to do more training with our students. Our digital citizenship is also a part of that, and trying to embed some courses to help support our students.
Board Member Wood.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Wilkins, I'm oftentimes, oftentimes find myself behind the eight ball. What, can, can you define for us, or for me at least, what micro credentialing is?
So I guess the best way is probably like a gaming system. You participate, you get to next levels, it shows that you are certified to be able to illustrate a skill or a competency, and we call that in the education world, we give them badges as they begin to learn that knowledge, and then they can share that knowledge and help to teach others.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other? Your Board Member Crowley.
Yeah, I guess it's a question probably for Ms. Moore. Do we, do you know if we have AI references included in our code of conduct? As far as behavioral expectations, I mean-
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say specifically AI, no. We may have, under sort of responsible use of technology and those kinds of things, expectations would be in there. You know, the, the policy, when I think about the pace at which AI moves, policy language needs, I feel like would be better suited to refer to what we will do, what our expectations are, and like a policy, a code of, the code of student conduct may include language, you know, sometimes you get into the thing where you put in parentheses "like," and you can't list everything in the world because you don't, things change. You know, it used to be cigarettes and smoking, then people have to add vapes, and then, you know, there's something else coming out, you know, so you're always changing it, and you don't, you don't want to change policy, that often it should stand. So AI is a, is a similar sort of tool. How can you, and if there is, I think it's a good question to look at, is there language that can- that can cover the kinds of things that we think may happen with the use of AI in classrooms so that it is covered in policy? I think that review should happen. And then similarly, in our existing policies, whether it's acceptable, you know, acceptable use for adults as well as for students, is there language that points at this type of technology? And then, or points to the district will have guidelines or AR so that those places where you can update more frequently and easily are available but pointed to in policy?
I definitely want to make sure some of the outcomes, the negative outcomes that some school districts are experiencing. And right now it seems like AI is the medium they're using to produce those outcomes that we're addressing that, that those things aren't acceptable. You know, using somebody else's voice to say racist comments or using somebody's image in a pornographic nature. Like, school systems are dealing with this now and they're kind of behind the eight ball, quite frankly, because they don't have any language in their codes to say that you can't do those kinds of things. Because before they, you couldn't do them.
We will, we will check and, and look at where the crosswalk is on that.
Vice Chair Mahanen?
Thank you. So I think, I guess my, my concern is not necessarily around the kind of presence of the language, even though I think that's important. Because I think that the, the vehicle is kind of different, but the language, the, people choose a different vehicle, but they still do the same thing. So like, I think that with any, the advent of any type of technology, there will always be people or individuals that will choose to abuse it. So I think the same thing happened with cell phones. When cell phones became more prevalent in schools, we started to see an uptick in people utilizing cell phones for things like bullying, those types of things. I think the same can be said for AI. I, I guess the caution I would, I want us to kind of have around that is that we not, sort of in our attempt to try to make sure that we're making sure everybody is following expectations around the usage of these things, that we're, we're not trying to slow down the sort of natural progression of a society where it's, we're sort of teaching kind of best practices and best use of a thing that actually is extremely beneficial. And I think the other thing too for me is that already it is likely that even though students may not have access to it, like if the website's blocked or whatever, you can't get to ChatGPT on your school device. You can get to it on your phone if you have the app on your phone. You can use it on your computer at home. There are people right now who are asking, I mean, there's all this data about how younger generations are using ChatGPT as kind of a, an additional person, asking them kind of what they should do about whatever, some random thing. Like, different generations are using AI differently. And I think that it's important that we understand that. And then the last thing I'll say is that, so right now, because I just want a clarity on this. So staff have the ability to utilize AI right now. Like, they can, they have access to it. It's not blocked.
Certain tools.
Certain tools.
Certain tools that we have available. The Magic AI, we also have Microsoft Copilot. So we have several tools that staff have current access to. With that, we're providing training for staff, but we need to exponentially grow our kind of rollout of that so staff can begin to model to help support students. One of the things that we've had internally as a conversation, and I think this is relevant, is we think about tools like, you know, plagiarism, that's the biggest piece, right?
Right.
So as we think about that and turning in dot com, one of the things that we've struggled with is a reliable tool to help monitor plagiarism, right? You can put that in a chat, but it's because it is open at this point and everybody is contributing, how do you know what is indeed plagiarized, right? And so we are struggling with how do we think about the tools and how do we think about the creation and the responsible use? Students should be able to get the access to information easily. It's about what they do with it. And so I think the push for us with adults is moving way beyond facts. We keep talking about that with our portrait and our durable skills. This is helping us lean even further into it. But until we get more capacity with our adults to use it, to, to leverage it and use it responsibly, we won't have the capacity to continue to push out some of these things with our students. But this year, our focus is on high school students because we know they have broad access right now. And until we begin to, to start to see what are some of the challenges? And as Board Member Crowley just talked about, some of the reasons we've kept a lot of the tools closed is because of some of our policies around how students could use and leverage it and what that would mean in liability for us.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on our discussion, Dr. Chris Weichert, our Chief Human Resource Officer, will discuss the budget amendment and transfer number sixteen.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Mahanen, Superintendent Moore, Board members. Stand before you to share our budget amendment sixteen. You know, as all, this is actually a budget transfer. It's not an amendment. There's no new revenues on this report. So we have two transfers. The first is Fund Two, which is our local appropriations from the county commissioners. You can see there, we're moving money from the fifty-one purpose, purpose code sequence to the fifty-four. This is school-based monies where schools have had local monies allotted and they've just transferred. This is the time of year where the twenty-fifth to the thirtieth, we're doing a lot of cleanup. Moving expenses, making sure we maximize every dollar we can, especially on the state side. Because those monies we lose at the end of the year. Which takes me to my second one here on the state public fund. You can see here, this is in PRC twenty-two fifty-one. We had some additional revenue, additional monies in the fifty-one hundred sequences, which is normally your normal instructional services. And we're moving those monies to cover expenses in fifty-three hundred, which is your at, more of a special populations or at-risk populations. The real difference in fifty-one and fifty-three is not much. It's just depending on the intent of the form. These monies here are covering expenses that purchases services is substitute expenses. And the supplies and materials are, well, supplies and materials. So this is just cleanup. We had this money in this code. We didn't spend all that money on this code. So instead of letting the state have it back, we moved it to cover here. Based on good accounting standards and our board policy, we are to have everything in each PRC balanced to zero at the purpose code by the first two digits. So that's the fifty-one hundreds and the fifty-four hundred. This is honestly accounting cleanup. This money was all based at the school level. The sequential pages just kind of give you the total transfer sheet. I would call it the balance sheet, if you will. They all zero out. At this point, I'll take any questions.
I don't think, I think, I think we're good.
Great, fantastic. We may have one more as we clean up, but then I'll be seventeen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Catty Moore, our interim superintendent, will discuss the request to the county commissioners for reallocation of funds.
Thank you, Board Chair. Frequent communications with the county manager around the budget deficits in the district and options with county local funds to support district needs have, have been occurring. You know, can we do this? Can we do that? I think earlier the board had approved requests to the commissioners for additional funding that they declined to fund. There was another conversation intermittently about going back to them for maybe a smaller amount. The board decided not to move forward with that. While those conversations are happening, we are working with county staff to determine whether there are existing funds or places that we can look to support the deficits that we accumulated in twenty-four, twenty-five. One of those areas was funds that we receive on an annual basis from the county. I think it's about one point seven three million dollars that is slated for capital outlay. Those are dollars that don't actually come to us from the county in the one hundred and, what next year is one hundred and eighty million dollars that they are providing in local funds. But they are dollars that we designate and then request that the commissioners reimburse us or pay for certain things. It's a little harder to access. So those dollars that come every year sit in an account at the county, not with us. And so the county let us know that there was about six point six million dollars in that account, some of it dating back to twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, that had not been allocated or spent and that there was an option to request that those funds be re-designated from capital to operating. But before doing so, we needed to look at our projects, the things that were already in process, things that were already out to bid and that sort of thing in design so that, because all, they couldn't tell whether all six point six was actually available because they hold it, but we, we work on it. So we worked with the staff in Lauren Richards' office. And if you, there are, there are attachments to today's agenda item that show the items that are in the amount and the budgeted amount or in progress. And so when you take a look at that, of the six point six million, you want, you want me to pull it up? Okay, sure. I know. Pull, pull up the capital two-thirds current encumbrances. We'll start there. As of six thirty twenty twenty-five. Yes, no, that one. Yes, thank you. So that shows work that's in progress, waiting on the invoice. Things have been designated. So all of these items that were currently in progress were subtracted from the six point six that the county says available. We did not cancel any projects that were already in progress, already designated. When you, once you took these funds out, what was left was three point eight million that is undesignedated, not targeted for a specific project and available for reallocation. We wanted to make sure that we did not touch anything that was already in progress, already steps into being used, even though we had not asked the county for those funds yet. So that's why the six point six that the county is showing available is actually a request for three point eight. And then the additional part of the PRC indicates that we are also asking the county for a one-time payment of four point seven million. I alluded to all of this at the last board meeting when I did the budget update. I talked about these items, but it was in more general terms than the specificity that we're talking about today and an actual request that we're talking about today. The four point seven million, I think at a high level, the way I would explain it is the, the county earns interest on bond dollars for projects. And they have specific regulations around how that interest is used. But there's an ability at the county level to look at other funds that they have available and sort of move things around. And so what they said to me was that there was an opportunity to request up to four point seven as a one-time payment. I'm not saying where that's coming from, it's the county will determine where the best place that, that is to come from. But I do know that they're looking at, at bond interest earnings, although that wouldn't be where it comes from, as a place where they have earned additional revenue and therefore can afford from some other pot likely to give us potentially up to four point seven. All of this is a request. And so I've been working on the numbers with the county manager to understand what's out there, what's available, what's possible. And so the language that we are using in this request to the commissioners would be to allocate, it's a total of eight point eight million, three, no, eight point five million. Three point three, three point eight that will come from the reallocation of the existing capital outlay funds that are unspent and undesignedated. They're not targeted for anything in particular right now. That's not to say we don't have needs, but it's, it's not on a list anywhere. And then the four point seven, and that comes to a total of eight point five. That would require board approval to make that request. That is what I am asking for this evening from the board. The use of these funds, we have been speaking to the commissioners. We have obviously outstanding obligations to some vendors. We have a pending obligation. We haven't completely circled in on the amount exactly, but we know that we have overspent on state funding. And when you owe the state, you have to pay one percent interest monthly on what you owe. So that really is a prime candidate at this point for any additional funds that the county might be able to provide us to pay down the debt that we will owe at the state level so we are not incurring that one percent interest on a monthly basis. Happy to answer any questions.
I believe on one of the pages that we got about this, we did see where we had built in some contingency dollars so that if something did pop up, we did have some money allocated. Is that right?
So that's, that's the next agenda item.
Oh, sorry.
Correct?
They all go together.
It's in both of them. It's in both of them. Okay, thank you, Lauren. It is in both of them.
Okay.
So, and, and that is something that, whether it's this item or the next item, sometimes projects cost more, sometimes they cost less. Sometimes something else comes up that jumps other things that are already in line. So we need to have the availability of a designated contingency line item in order to deal with those circumstances. So yes, thank you.
Yes, Board Member Crowley?
So I understand that we have three point eight deemed like undesignedated, but we did have a facility audit that identified over nine hundred million dollars in capital needs with our facilities. So if we request this up to four point seven million, would we have a plan to pay this back to our facilities and operations so that, so that we don't, it just doesn't get shifted? And that's, that money that never gets put into our facilities?
I appreciate that question. I think there's always an opportunity when, when you have unmet needs to determine how you might use additional funding. We have not talked about paying it back. But, but we do know that we have unmet needs. They're just not on the calendar. They're not planned for yet. And we do have a deficit for twenty-four, twenty-five that is there. So it's about moving the funds in two arenas where we have needs, right? So it is an option. It is a solution that I believe makes sense right now. But in no way do I want to diminish the fact that we have unmet capital needs. They're just not on the books designated, planned for at this point in time. I think that the regular allocations, and it's also why we've, you know, we've looked at just the portion that's not in play. But it's also why the, you have the next item that's coming up around the, the capital bond project list that the board approves that we're looking at making some changes to, to update that, to take to the commissioners as well because, because things change. So I think the continued stream of funding that comes in, what, what means, what it means here is that there are some things that we will have to wait on. Not anything we've already planned for or already started, but that long list of needs that we have, that's nine hundred million, will take longer to get to. Yes.
Yes, Board Member Wood?
Catty, may I ask, I don't exactly how to ask this question, but based upon your apparently substantial conversations with the folks at the county, would this request, is this something they are expecting or would this be a surprise?
I do not believe it is a surprise. I, I've not spoken with any commissioners, but county staff are aware of the request. And we have collaborated on how to, how to make such a request, which is why it's coming before the board for approval, for to send a letter to the county on how we make this request.
Good, thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Moving on, Lauren Richards, our Chief Operations Officer, will discuss the request to update the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-six two-third bond project list.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, members of the Board and Superintendent Moore. So in the fall of twenty twenty-three, this board approved the project allocation for the twenty-four, twenty-six two-thirds bond funds, which is a bi-annual allocation of eight point five million dollars. You may recall that that was the first time that we actually used our homegrown rubric to be able to select the projects to bring forward for the board's approval. Twenty twenty-three was obviously a couple of years ago. Things do change. And so in review of the projects that you see here on this list, you can see that several of them are in progress at this time. And we didn't allocate any contingency in these dollars. And so the ask of the board this evening is to take those final two projects on the list and defer them to additional fund sources to allow for about eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars in contingency. This is also an item that upon your approval this evening would go to our county commissioners for final approval and allocation. And so those two items, the first one is Main Street Academy HBAC. That school, in the gym, excuse me. That school does have a working ERV system in the gym at this time. And we are currently seeing anywhere from an eight-month to an eight-month. seeing anywhere from an eight-month to a 12-month lead time on that equipment as well, um, in the current HVAC systems that we're doing. And then, in looking at that last item, the North Versite Track renovation, um, the reason for selecting this project to defer to, um, later funds is NCHSA has changed the, um, competition tracks from eight lanes to nine lanes, doing so in this project, the funding is not allocated there to be able to do so. And staff went ahead and took a look at where North Versite Stadium fell in the project rubric as well. And it is coming up in the 28 to 30, 2030 timeline. And so, it makes more sense to be able to address the entire stadium project all at one time, which we have not historically done well at. Um, and so, looking to defer that there. Speaking about, um, additional funds over time, I do want the board to keep in mind that there is a potential allocation in 2027 of additional bond funds, um, to support some of our additional needs as well. And I'll open it up to questions, and I have Daryl Walker here with me this evening as well.
Board Member Crowley.
Did you say they've changed it from eight lanes to nine lanes? Because most of our schools have six lanes.
Yes.
So, how is that?
So, I can answer that question. They can, they can host meets.
Yeah.
They just can't host official NCHSA meets.
That is correct.
Like the ones that, uh, you know, conference finals or any NCHSA events. But they can host district inter-conference meets.
So, would our plan be to adapt all of our tracks to nine-lane tracks?
Well, I would say that's probably a conversation for a Buildings and Grounds meeting or a workshop. The board may recall, we have a stadium, Deaton Thompson, that is also up for renovation, and we reviewed some design plans. And so, it may be we want to consider, um, a certain design plan for that stadium to support the district at large, or continue to make the investment in all of those school stadium tracks.
That, that, that's a board discussion that's
Correct.
worth having. It's, it would be a lot of money to retrofit all state, and I'm not sure that even all tracks you could do it. In some cases, you just don't have enough, especially if the interior is, serves as a practice field or a base, uh, you know, soccer, football combo field, you may not have the space to do it. But, but a plan around where and how is something that, that the board should discuss.
Vice Chair Bohannon.
Thank you. So, when, in the conversations that staff has sort of had around, um, where these kind of dollars are potentially allocated, was there discussion about the impact of any potential consolidation or, um, kind of a merger on, you know, the potential investment? Like if we, is it still, is it still sort of worth the, the investment to go ahead and spend the money if there's a potential for us to, you know, like we're gonna have to have conversations, I think, at some point about, like, merging and consolidation of some of our buildings? So, was that a, a conversation at all?
I mean, I think those are always conversations when we're looking at facility planning. We're always looking at school enrollment, um, school replacement, school renovations, all of those different aspects. Staff would review that information and then bring that to the board for an open discussion to be able to make any considerations.
And I, and I could just throw another log on that fire. It, it's why you should review annually and update your plan, because there may be other needs that, that, that come into play. You may make other decisions about school sites for facilities that may change the order of operations as well. So, th- this project plan should be reviewed annually.
Board Member King.
Um, I think I need to just, to piggyback on, uh, Vice Chair Bohannon's, um, question, uh, if we are looking to, or thinking about potential down-the-road consolidations, those kind of things, if we vote as this list as it is, are we saying, let's move forward with this project, all of these projects?
So, the ask tonight is to remove the two items listed on the agenda page, which is the Main Street Gym HVAC and the North Versite Track Renovation.
Okay, okay.
And to allocate the 870 into contingency to give us some flexibility for needs that may come up this year if we have a boiler or chiller die, or have something that we need to address urgently, um, due to a crisis, a storm, something that's not eligible on insurance, various things.
So, pulling, we shouldn't pull any, we just leave it as it is and then we can pull things later as if we need to?
Yes, so, we would take this ask to the county, and that 870 would sit in one allocation for contingency, and then we would continue to follow any of the protocols for the contract limits to come back to the board if we need to design something, or if we have an emergency purchase to be able to move forward with the project, so that you know how that 870 is being allocated.
If I could, if I could extend what I think is being asked here.
Sure.
Um, I'm wondering if what we're, what we're talking about is not tonight, cause that's not the purpose of tonight, but do we need to come back to this list in a Facilities Committee meeting and look at bigger plans that the board may have and conversations that have been going on to determine whether any other changes might need to be made?
Yes.
Okay.
Sure, for any of the remaining projects?
That's correct.
Is that?
Yes.
I understand that now, I apologize.
Okay.
I was trying to say it without saying.
Board Member Crowley.
Yeah, so, as an example of, like, we just finished a, a really big, um, renovation of North Versite High School. So, I guess, like, seeing on here, 1.7 million in a roof replacement, I, I guess I'm concerned about the cost effectiveness of not doing that while we were doing the multimillion-dollar school renovation.
Yeah, so, a, a couple of different reasons for that potentially. So, um, one, we, we do want to try to go into a building and being better about touching anything and everything we can at that time. But the other piece we have to look at is some of our campuses were renovated over different decades, and so, you may have five different years built on a campus, and depending on whether a 10, 20, or 30-year roof was put on that facility, you're changing your timeline for going back. And if we can preserve that roof, as an example, for as long as possible, we may not touch it at the same time. But other times, it's valuable to get ahead of the projects, and so, you're always weighing those decisions each time.
Any other questions? Thank you. Next, Catty Moore, uh, once again, our interim superintendent, will discuss the contract with Hill Consultants.
Good evening again. I think it's in, in, as you can see in the PRC, the, the work with Hill, which, and they were contracted prior to my coming on as interim superintendent, they, they were really able to get a handle on and identify and get us better numbers really around what the budget deficit was. In addition to that, they have been quite instrumental in the options that are available with us with state funding and our contracts and how things are billed. I mean, I, I would, I think they've saved us more than millions of dollars, quite frankly, in the work that they've done to help us make sure that we are putting our expenses in the right pots to maximize state dollars. So, as they were ending their contract June 30th, and, and I was thinking about, so, are there additional needs that they could support as we move into the coming school year? And really leverage the experience and knowledge they already have of our district as we continue to make sure that we bring forth a, the balanced budget for next year, that we deliver an audit on time, those kinds of things. So, this new contract with them contemplates their support in ensuring that our opening budgets with our schools and our departments are within line and reflect the reductions that we've made, um, for next year and that dollars are in the right pots, so to speak, as we move forward. They will also support us in the transition to the new Tyler ERP system. We, we've had some support that we've contracted for that, that is sunsetting. We believe that the in-house support that we've had with, um, Kevin and his team and actually the work with Hill, um, that one of the people that they are contracting with to do the support was one of the, the counties that implemented Tyler when they first came to the state of North Carolina. So, we've got some expertise that's coming along with that in the contract. And that, that will also provide some support to our interim CFO as we're making all these transitions as well. I also think it's important for Hill to interface with our audit firm to make sure that we develop a, that, that we deliver an on-time audit in the fall, um, and that we are not looking at a late audit again. I anticipate we'll have findings again, um, based on where we've been this year, cause it is a 24, 25 audit. But I, but it is critical that we have an on-time delivery of the audit. And so, that, they will help with supporting and making sure that we're getting that, that done as well. So, the recommendation today, you have a copy of the contract and a copy of their scope of work. I think one additional piece that I will add is that I have asked that they do submit somewhere between quarterly and monthly written statements of the work they're doing and the tasks that they have accomplished, so that we can share those with the board and the public as well. I don't think that was in their prior contract. Happy to answer any questions.
Vice Chair Bohannon.
Thank you. So, um, and I, I ask these questions because I think that, uh, obviously, I'm really appreciative of the work that Hill has done for us. I just also think that if you're a member of the public and you're looking at the contract amount, you're sort of going $145,000, sort of, you know, what, you know, is that, is that too much money? You know, what, what are you getting for that amount? And I know the scope is in here, but, um, I guess the first question I would have is, did we consider, um, sort of looking at, um, options other than, um, kind of going into another contract with Hill and, and sort of, if not, sort of what were the variables as to why we did not?
So, I am interested in entering into a new contract with Hill because I know the work they've done, and I've seen it for the, the month that I've been here. I, I have seen the savings and the clarity that they brought to our finances, including their participating in the meetings with the NC Auditor's Office and facilitating those requests as well. And their knowledge already of our staff and our system and our finances, I think, gives them a, a appropriate opening to continue the work that they're doing with us. I do have a good working relationship with them. I've worked with them in a previous district, um, so I was not surprised that they were here when I, when I got here. And I, I don't know that we have the time to put out an RFP or an RFQ, if we even want to do that or consider other firms, we just don't have that time to waste. The school year is upon us in terms of the new school year. We're opening up the Tyler ERP system next Monday, if it all goes well. And we've got, we've just got a lot of things before us. We've got the audit report coming from the NC Auditor's Office sometime soon. We know that we will have to deal with what it has to say and the recommendations or language that is in that, um, and they are familiar with all of these things.
Thank you. And then, the last question I had is just about, I see the draft contract is also in here. Is it, is it sort of a practice that it's, it's presented as blank to the board before there are any signatures in terms of, like, I, I see at the bottom, there's like the space for the attorney review and then finance pre-audit, like, is that a matter of just general practice?
So, I do believe the pre-audit, we did the pre-audit, I don't know if it's stamped that way or not.
Okay.
But we don't, we don't get ahead of the signatures before the board, I don't, I don't think we get signatures before board approval.
Let me just clarify, I don't, I don't mean the actual signature for execution. I meant so that prior to it comes to us for, for
Has it been reviewed by the, yes, it has.
Okay, and the pre-audit is completed?
Yes, it has.
All right.
Yes, those have happened, yes.
Chair Kaplan. Yes, Board Member Crowley.
Yes, um, regarding the Hill contractor and the public speaker's comments, um, the one that, that really resonated with me was the review of processes for the Finance Committee. Um, you know, I, I found it kind of astonishing that it says there's no mention of asking for financials when I know just me asked no fewer than 10 times for budget-to-actuals on a monthly basis. So, um, I'm wondering if that is something that we could include in the contract, where they help us with those?
Yeah. I, I am, so, I, I sort of feel that that's sort of couched under support to staff.
Okay.
I met with staff today to review draft reports and what they would look like on the budget-to-actuals and quarterly reports and then that sort of thing that would come to the board at Finance Committee meetings. We talked about the cadence for when that would happen. Since Finance Committee is the second meeting of the month, that would be a good time to bring those reports for the previous month, cause if you try to do it the first week, it might be too quick on the end of the previous month. But so, we've, we've already started talking about it. So, they will review that with us as part of their support to staff and the transition of the interim CFO and all of that.
I, I feel like in this circumstance and the dire financial situation that we're in, um, as board members, and you all can tell me if you think I'm surmising this wrong, but, um, we have, I have felt like I have not been given timely information or accurate information. And, you know, I, I appreciate, uh, the contract-serving staff, but at what point, like, how are we supposed to do our fiduciary responsibilities if we're not getting the reporting that we need to make good financial decisions? And I, I'm not sure where else to put that except for, I, I, I really don't know.
And, and, and so, my initial thoughts on that are, that is not a contractor's responsibility, that is the superintendent and CFO's responsibility. So, you have made clear the things that you feel like you need to see in terms of monthly reports of budget-to-actuals. I'm looking at quarterly reports that are more comprehensive, state, local, federal, everything, um, and, um, so that you can see where we are on track in terms of spending and percentages and those sorts of things. I'm working with staff on pulling that information together, looking at models for what that could look like. Um, I don't think it's at all outside the scope of the contract work to ask Hill to look at it as well, but that's not who you're engaging with to do the things that you need as a board, cause that's gotta survive past beyond a Hill contract. They might help us build our capacity to do it, make sure that it's right, but that's gotta come from your superintendent and your finance staff.
Any other questions? Okay, oh, yes, Vice Chair Bohannon.
I just wanted to, cause I know Board Member Crowley, you kind of looked down and you were like, you, you asked for kind of, boy, I just wanna, I just wanna acknowledge that there are multiple board members, and I know, I, I know you, you heard us, I just wanna reiterate that this is something that we've been dealing with for a while, where we ask for a thing and then we don't get the thing, and then we're up here trying to be nice about it, but we, we need the stuff we ask for, so.
So, set the Finance Committee and Office to hold your light.
Thank you.
Or is the Finance Committee at the second meeting, perhaps the second board meeting office to hold your light?
Thank you. Uh, so next, uh, Catty Moore also is gonna discuss the teacher and Article 46 teacher supplement.
Yeah, I'm taking all the hits tonight, so. So, to say we were revising this shortly before coming in here is not an understatement. And so, I, you know, I hope we pull up the right PowerPoint, cause we revised it several times. So, let's just go. We talked at the last board meeting about the fact that we needed to look at our Article 46 local supplement, that it is a variable funding source, it is not a fixed funding source. You do not know from one year to the next what that amount is going to be. The commissioners will tell us, they project an amount, and that's what they give us for the beginning of the school year, that's in, that is part of our, like, the $180 million for next year includes 19-point-whatever-million dollars that is anticipated, that they have designated in their budget as the Article 46 revenue that is owed to the district. So, we will get that entire amount, it'll be part of the monthly allocation that's divided into 12 that we get from the commissioners. However, sometime in the fall timeframe, they will true up what the actual tax revenue was and determine whether or not it was more or less than what they had projected in their The first three or four years, they owed us money. For the 23, 24 year, which we received this notification last fall, we owed them $777,000 cause the revenues were short. And that was taken out of the allocation that they give us monthly for the remaining months of the year. So, it's paid. So it's paid. In March, they told us that their revenues for the end of March were $500,000 below projections. So they were not meeting their projections for the tax revenue in terms of what we would gain. They projected at that time that we would owe 1.2 million when they true up again in the fall. So I just want to keep that all in mind as I get ready to talk about the next stuff. So on the first slide here, we just wanted to give you a representation of what our current salary schedules look like. You will note that the salary schedule that we publish online has a line for the Article 46 supplement at $300. And the decision made by the board when this was distributed to teachers was that it was the same amount regardless of level of experience for every teacher that was eligible to receive it. So that's what our salary schedules look like. And then you'll see next to it that there is also a monthly local supplement and then there's the total supplement. This is not what our staff's paychecks look like. Our staff's paycheck have the amount that has the total supplement, but it does not have the breakout of the monthly local supplement and the Article 46 supplement. The reason this is important is that the monthly local supplement is based on recurring funding that is the same and budgeted to cover every teacher every year. The Article 46 supplement, those dollars, because those dollars may change, you do need to, and I recommend, reviewing on an annual basis what the amount is that the commissioners are telling us in the spring they anticipate we will be getting, looking at what our staffing levels look like and the number of teachers that are eligible, and continue to review on an annual basis that the $300 amount can be within the budget that is allocated to us. Could be more, could be less, because that is a variable source of income. I wish it weren't a variable source of income. But, but based on how this happens in this community, it is a variable source of income. It would be so much better for the commissioners if they could just say, whatever the $300 costs every year, we'll make sure you have it all. But that's not, that's not how this legislation came about and how these funds come about. So we do have to at least review it on an annual basis. And that's what I told you we would do and we did. Moving forward, we will split out the Article 46 from the regular monthly local supplement on paychecks so that teachers can see them separately. Next slide, please. So, when you take a look at the supplements last year and the pay last year and the average local supplement, the average local supplement, so the, the total supplement average is 78.81. The portion that is stable from county funding on a yearly basis was 48.81. This is on average. And then the portion that came from Article 46 last year was 3,000. So you see that the total supplement average and the cost to the district, you add those together and you get the amounts. The above number does not include the $62 per month that was approved for fiscal year '25. That happened because in those years where the income, the tax revenue was higher than what they projected to give us, we built a reserve. That reserve was determined by the board to be provided and given out to teachers and you should give every dime of this to teachers so long as it doesn't put you in the hole later, is the only caveat I would put there. Or if it does put you in a hole later, that you are prepared for how you will fill that hole. And so that was also critically important in the review for this year, facing the budget shortfall that we had from '24-'25, receiving information from the commissioners that we may be 1.2 million in the hole for this year's allocation based on the revenue, the true-up that will happen in September-ish. We took that into consideration as we were making our recommendations for how to implement Article 46 next year. I do want to also just throw out there that all these dollars, you can't just divide the total by the number of people because you have to do retirement, FICA and those kinds of things so that, that the amount that actually goes to teachers versus the amount that it costs to implement are different. Next slide, please. So, you know, this, he went back and checked the language. Thank you, Chris. So in fiscal year, for fiscal year '23, the language that was used, remember I talked about how Article 46 dollars were used to ensure that senior-level staff received an overall 4% raise because when it wasn't 4% from the state, the difference was put in the local supplement. So it is an acceptable use of Article 46 because it was used to increase the local supplement to make sure that even senior staff level who didn't receive an average 4% raise were receiving 4%. So, that's about 1.2 million including benefits. That's what that cost is and we have been taking that sort of off the top of Article 46 every year so that that stays for the senior-level staff. And, and you'll see there, teachers between 15 and 24 and 25-plus, we wanted to make sure that their overall increase was 4%. It was not 4% in the state amount, but when you added the local supplement amount that came from Article 46, it made the 4%. And Article 46 was identified by the board as the specific revenue source to make sure that that would happen. And I just want to make sure that we're not talking about salary. We're talking about supplement and overall salary being a 4% increase that year. And because it didn't happen in the state salary, we put it in the local by using Article 46 funds. I probably said that five times now and every time I know that there's still going to be confusion about it. Next slide, please. So you'll see where we started striking out at 3 o'clock this afternoon and 4 o'clock this afternoon as we receive updated information. So, in speaking with the manager this morning, asking for, do we have, you know, walking through what this recommendation was going to be tonight and how we came up with the recommendation for tonight, she shared that they had just received their last budget update on the quarter and would check to see where that stood so that I could have the most up-to-date numbers on the recommendation for this evening. And what she shared later was that what was a $500,000 shortfall in the last quarter is now in this quarter, $90,000 to the good. So the revenue projections are $90,000 beyond where they had projected they would be based on the amount that they give us for the year. That changes the landscape for me. So, they're saying they, they believe it's going to be budget-neutral. We still won't know until September. In September, we're either going to owe them or they're going to owe us unless some, you know, magic fairy dust falls from the sky and we're exactly zeroed out. It hasn't happened yet. So, but the notion of a shortfall of 1.2 million that I, we had not identified funds for in next year's budget doesn't look like it is going to be a thing. So, we've struck that from our considerations. Charter schools do receive a proportion of these funds. That is because the $180 million that the county gives us in local funds is all in one bucket. That includes the charter school funding. The Article 46 is part of the $180 million that they give us and so it is a part of the funds that are accessible to charter schools. If there are options and ways to revisit that, I am happy to explore those. But right now, this is the proper thing to do. They, they have been receiving a portion of the Article 46. We have budgeted for a portion of the Article 46 for next year. At whatever point in time that changes, if it were no longer an obligation that we have, we would certainly change it. So, whenever that would happen. And the, the numbers that we used, 40-40 in terms of eligible licensed employees when fully staffed, and I think it's important to spend just a moment on the fully-staffed piece. We know we're not going to be fully-staffed all year. The original recommendation, go to the next page, that showed that we would run a deficit of about $160,000 was predicated on being fully-staffed. But we have to run the numbers based on being fully-staffed. We, we can't run numbers based on assumptions of how many vacancies we're going to have. We've done that, don't want to do it again. Okay? And so, we want to make, you know, it was a red number. And the fact that it was a red number is why we didn't recommend it. Even though, I'm pretty sure we'll have more than $160,000 worth of vacancies that would have sort of made that a wash in terms of the overall big picture. But you will see that we have now X-ed out the 1.2 million that we thought we were going to need to reconcile with the county. We still have the senior certified staff supplement. That amount still comes off the top. We still have the charter amount. That amount comes out as well. So the projected amount now is at 16 million. And based on being fully-staffed at 40-40 and taking out that 1.2 million, we now show a projected balance of $1 million. And I'm going to say that that is about, what, 5%? It's about 5%. This board may want to look at designating 5% as a targeted amount to hold in reserve on an annual basis for the true-up that happens in September. But I would also say that once the true-up happens in September and we don't owe money or we get back more money, the board could decide rather than continuing to accumulate a larger reserve every year to allocate those funds out, but maybe do it in the spring or May or something like that when you know that it's available. Does that make sense? Okay. I want everybody to remember all this because I won't be here. So, so, so I would say that, given that it's come out around 5%, I think 5% is a good target to sort of have in reserve as we move forward. It helps with the potential true-up that we have to do in the fall. If we don't need it, we can allocate it out because you don't want to continue to grow that. You want to give it to the teachers, so. Next slide, please. You see the title of this slide, it's now irrelevant due to new information. So, this was going to be the recommendation that would have netted us about that 5% again as a reserve. But now that balloons to 2.3 if you take out the 1.2. So for me, this no longer needs to even be in discussion. That was when we were, that was the recommendation to reduce it to 2.75 per month. I believe that we are comfortable, next page, next slide, please. We, I've talked about this a little bit already, changing the budgeting and the paycheck stubs. So I'm just going to go on to the next one. I do need to spend just a moment here on this because there's been some confusion on this as well that I cleared up this morning. The 19 million that the county is giving us as projected Article 46 revenue is separate from the annual cost of the local supplement, which is $26 million. Those are not the same. So the $26 million funds the line that you see on your check that's the local supplement and the 19 million funds the line that you see as the Article 46 supplement. Okay? All right. Next slide, please. So our recommendation now is leave the Article 46 at 300. We believe it will continue to work for staff. And we will continue the local teacher supplements from the local appropriations as had been done in the past based on experience level. Those will remain the same as well. And then we will continue to use the Article 46 funding to cover that 1.2 million that we talked about for the senior staff that helped make sure that they had a 4% raise by adding to the local supplement two years ago.
And when you say senior staff, you're talking about longevity of educators.
This is teachers. This is teachers. And I think a previous slide said teachers that were between 15 and 25 years and those that were 25 years and more who did not receive through the state and will not again if we ever end up on a budget. The, for a number of years now, salary increases from the legislature have been concentrated at teachers below 15 years of experience and much smaller for teachers beyond 15 years of experience. So, this county did something about that a few years ago using Article 46 funding.
Any questions? Board Member Watts.
Not a question, but again, I thank you for you and the people who have put this together. I would like to recommend, because there's still a lot of confusion around this to the general public, that is there a way that we can have public workshops or even staff workshops to have greater explanation on, what you've done tonight is, I think, remarkable.
I, I, so let's, let's start with an FAQ and maybe ask, like I can tell you that I spoke with FCIE this morning to explain where we were this morning. It's changed a little bit since. I can speak with them again because they have access to a lot of teachers as well. But I think maybe doing an FAQ first, making sure our principals understand it because that's where, that's where they go for their questions and their answers. They don't, they might come to you, I'm not going to say anything about that. But they should be coming to us or to the area superintendents or their principals. That's where they're going to get their information. So if we equip those folks who are closest to teachers on a daily basis, let's start there and then, and then see what that happens. But if we need to open up some sort of a session or an opportunity, we'll look at that as well.
Thank you. And I just want to reiterate one more time, I've said this for two years now, charter schools, charter schools, charter schools. If we can find a way to bring those wonderful students and parents back in, this will also impact this part of the budget, also other parts of the budget. But I've overlooked that several times in curriculum committee meetings and finance committee meetings. When you look at the money that we're paying to charter schools, if we could find a way to have those students and parents come back into our school system, that would help us greatly with our financial situations.
Vice Chair, Boeahan.
So, I, I guess in terms of discussion, I, I want to say first, I appreciate the way this information was presented. I agree with Board Member Watts that I think there'll still be some outstanding questions that are happening to be the case anyway. Because it's, the way Article 46 works is confusing.
Well, you know, what's, you know, hindsight 2020 here. We could have said nothing and just left it alone, right? We could have just said nothing. But I do think the clarity and the learning around it is worthwhile because I do think it's important to review on an annual basis. And separating it on the paycheck stubs and all of that are steps towards really more financial clarity around where our funds come from and how they are allocated. But, you know, I've learned a lot, I'll tell you that.
I think to that point, and this is something I wanted to reiterate and I appreciate the thoughts around the splitting it. But Board Member Brown Gaither, and I, correct me if anybody else suggested it, but Board Member Brown Gaither said that and made that suggestion a while ago. It might have been like two years ago, really. Is that how long ago it was? It's, it's been at least a year and a half where we were, I remember we were in that committee meeting. We were talking about that we, there was additional revenue that we had, but the pot was bigger. It wasn't a million, it was maybe like three or something like that. I might, the numbers might be different, but we had some Article 46 money and there was discussion around what to do with it. And we talked about the fact that if we spent all of it and allocated that out to staff, that there would be during a period of an economic downturn or something like that, we would have to reduce it because it's variable. It's based on the revenue. And, you know, one of the, one of the kind of balances, because I'll be honest, I said that I felt like we needed to keep some in reserve. But I think on, off-balance, what we also discussed was having it delineated on the pay stub so that people could see if there was a reduction that this was the Article 46 versus the regular supplement. So I, I think that kind of, it, you know, again, it's, it, I don't want to keep banging the drum, but that's one of those things where it's great to hear you as interim superintendent say this is something that we should do. But respectfully, this was recommended and kind of suggested by members of our board. So I, I think it's important that, you know, as we move forward, that those types of things are kind of taken into consideration.
I agree.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I think, I think a little bit of news, good news is better than no good news at all. And I think it's a little disconcerting, if I may say so, that there was not spontaneous applause. applause. Here we go. Okay, there it is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I didn't want to encourage anybody to violate our protocol, here, Madam Chair.
I can appreciate that, but you don't.
But if, if I understand what you're saying correctly, that these are all green numbers.
Yes.
And they're good numbers, and for the board, for our folks that are in attendance here, and for folks that are watching out there in.
Channel two.
Channel two, world, yeah, channel two, world. This is good news.
History.
And it's something we should celebrate, and we have, it's not the solution, it's not the panacea for our fiscal crisis, but it is good news, and I'm just hoping everyone understands and appreciates that. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think I would just, I would add one more thing, and, you know, this, this review really has nothing to do with the budget deficit for last year. It has nothing to do with that. But in looking at all of the financial systems and practices of the district and compensation and all of those things, it was a piece that I felt sort of lacked maybe some clarity and some structure and understanding around how it was applied and where it was coming from. So, so providing that and keeping it the same is great, but if that number had been red, you were getting the recommendation from me, because I'm not bringing forth a red number. So, and it was hard, it was, it was hard to come to that. So I'm just, I'm glad that, based on updated information from this afternoon, that we're able to revise that recommendation.
Thank you. Thanks. That concludes our discussion items. We're going to move on to our consent agenda items.
If I could, Madam Chair, if I could interrupt for just one moment before you start consent, since we couldn't get consent right last time, I'm going to, I'm going to make sure we don't get it right this time either. I just need to make a couple of comments before we move into the consent agenda. There are two, there were two items on the consent agenda, only one now, because I think one's already been moved to action. But items, item B, the contract with Greater Winston-Salem, Inc., and item D, the contract with Crosby Scholars, and Crosby Scholars has already been moved to action. Those, both of those items include funding, federal funding from either Title II, III, or IV. We received notification late last week that the Department of Education is not releasing any funds associated with Title II, III, or IV at this time. We do not have a timeline on what the review is about, or what the questions or concerns are, and when they will release those funds, we don't, we don't have any information. We just know that at this point, they are reviewing all Title II, III, and IV allocations, so we are not receiving expected funds in those areas. There are programs and people in Title II, III, and IV, and these two items have Title II, III, or IV. It's staff development, professional development dollars, there's people and training. Title III serves mostly our MLLs. Title IV, what's Title IV serve? At-risk services. And so, so B and D, those items include some Title II, III, or IV. We are still going to request the board approval for the memorandums of agreement and the work, but some of the work may be paused or not start based on the source of funding identified with it. So, but we do need the permission, because as soon as we have those dollars, or if we can do part of the work, we want to move forward.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that. So we have a slate of three items to consider for the consent agenda. First, consider approval of the general personnel report. Next, consider approval of the contract with Greater Winston-Salem, Inc., which was briefed at the June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five curriculum committee. Next, consider approval of the contract with School Links, briefed at the June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five Board of Education meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
All in favor? Thank you, that passes unanimously. Moving on to action items. We have eight items to consider tonight. First, consider approval of the budget amendment and transfer number sixteen. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Watts, a second by Board Member Crowley, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, that passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of request to county commissioners to reallocate the funds. Do I have a motion?
Moved to approve.
So I have a motion by Board Member Crowley, and I had a, have a second by Board Member Kuhn, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, that motion passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of the request to update the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-six two-thirds bond project list. Do I have a motion?
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Brown Gaither, I have a second by Board Member Watts, any discussion?
I do have a question. I just want to make sure that our concerns are about reorganizing that list, if there's other decisions made about schools that that can happen.
Yes, and I believe that is.
I think I heard from, most of the board members were nodding their heads, that yes, you do want to revisit the overall list, and I think we can bring that to a facilities committee.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, we've had discussion, all in favor? Thank you, that passes unanimously. Next, consider the approval of the contract with Hill Consultants. Do I have a motion? So I have a motion by Board Member Kuhn, I have a second by Board Member Brown Gaither, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, that passes unanimously as well. Next, consider approval of the instructional empowerment contract for Kimmel Farm. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, do I have a second? So I have a motion by Board Member Watts, I have a second by Vice Chair Boe Hannon, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, that passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of the recommendation for Article forty-six teacher supplement.
Moved to approve.
Second?
So I have a motion by Board Member Crowley, I have a second by Board Member Miller, any further discussion?
Just as clarification, being that it's here on the report, saying two-seventy-five per month, do we need to correct that to three hundred per month? Because it's here, it's reading two-seventy-five.
So, so we revised it in the presentation, and we've put revised in the title, so we'll, I think we're covered.
Okay.
Okay. You want? It is corrected on simply? Okay, so maybe we need to refresh? Oh, so the printed might be out of, yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, okay, great. Okay. All in favor? Thank you, motion passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of the contract with Crosby Scholars, briefed at the June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five Board of Education meeting. Do I have a motion?
Moved to approve. Or second?
So I have a motion by Board Member Kuhn, I have a second by Board Member Crowley, any discussion?
Discussion.
Yes.
I would like to recuse myself from the vote due to a conflict of interest.
Yes, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously, with one board member recusing. Next, consider approval of the memorandum of agreement between Forsyth Community College and Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, briefed at the June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five Board of Education meeting. Do I have a motion? So I have a motion by Board Member Brown Gaither, do I have a second by Board Member Kuhn, any discussion? Yes, Board Member Wood.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our board will remember, I'm sure, and our audience here this evening, as well as those watching on Channel Two, about two years ago, there was an incident of, that brought considerable consternation to a lot of our parents, a lot of our families, and probably board members and others as well. And I asked at that time, it was the Drag Queen event to which I'm referring, of probably, what, two, two years and a few months ago? And I asked at that time if our legal counsel in the drafting of the future, at that time, what would be the future memorandum of agreement from, with the Winston-Salem Forsyth County School System Board and the Forsyth Technical Community College Board, if we could amend or include language in that new agreement that would address that problem, if it couldn't prevent it from ever happening again, but certainly would intrude upon the situation, notice that the board was not happy with what happened, and we'd prefer no event like that would happen in the future. So, Madam Chair, I would like to ask our legal counsel, Dionne, if she would, to explain that, and if you would, Dionne, can you identify the new language that's, that's in the agreement, both for the board to see and hear, as well as the audience as well? Thank you.
Sure. So after that event that you're referencing, Board Member Wood, there was a revision to the addendum, the previous comprehensive MOA, that added language that would purport to allow for a greater level of communication between the Forsyth Tech liaison and the leadership at early middle college. And that information was added under the personnel section of the MOA, and it said essentially that they agreed to develop a regular schedule of meetings to discuss upcoming college programs and other updates that might be relevant and pertinent to the administration, as well as the impact of any programs on students. And if earlier middle college principals determined that any event that was planned by the college would be inappropriate for high school students to participate in, that they would agree to collaborate to limit our students from exposure to those events. And so that addendum was approved in twenty-twenty-three, shortly after the event happened, and that exact language has been absorbed into this new version that's on for approval tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, thank you. Any other, any other discussion, questions? Okay, all in favor? Thank you, that passes unanimously. Our next meeting of our regular Board of Education will be August twelfth, twenty-twenty-five, and before we begin our public comment period, let me say to our Cable Two viewers, thanks for watching. This will conclude our broadcast. So at this time.
Thank you for joining us on your school channel, Cable Two.